Good evening. Welcome to our Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 4th, 2025. Bonsoir et bienvenue à notre réunion de conseil pour cat novembre. To open this evening's meeting, I would like councillor Larabee to read our landed comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we meet today, I would like to take a moment to recognize the importance of the land on which we are gathered. The municipality of West Nipissing respectfully acknowledges that we are located on the homelands of the Anishnaabe people, on the traditional territory of the Nipissing, Temagamy and Dokeys First Nation, covered by the Robinson-Uron Treaty. We honor and recognize their historical connection to the land and value their significant contribution in shaping and strengthening our communities.
Merci. Okay, declarations of pecuniary interest, councillor Larabee.
Madam Mayor, I am declaring a conflict of interest on general government on the part of 5.1.3.
Okay, and you filed the appropriate paperwork with our clerk?
With the clerk, yes.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Any other declarations of pecuniary interest? Okay, moving on, we do have an addendum for this evening. Adam Clark?
This by councillor Nickel and seconded by councillor St Louis. Be it resolved that the addendum for the council meeting held on November the 4th, 2025 be adopted as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Carried.
It is moved by councillor St Louis and seconded by councillor Nickel. Be it resolved that the agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on November the 4th, 2025 be adopted as presented.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. On to number four, which is delegations and petitions. In your package, you do have a petition for installation of a traffic light at the intersection of Highway 17 and 575 in Burner. It's a petition along with some letters from businesses and organizations in the community. As per our policy, we will receive that petition and it will be on the agenda at the next meeting for discussion. Okay, moving on into committee of the whole, general government, 5.1.1 proposed dates for the presentation of the staff budget. As we had discussed, staff had provided an update to the budget process as per the amended legislation. And as we indicated, I think we were all quite set on keeping the process as close to the traditional budgeting process as possible. So with that, we are proposing to begin the staff budget presentation, which are their recommendations, and then we'll move into the formal legislative process after we actually have those discussions as a group. There are potential start dates indicated of December 3rd and 4th, which would be evening meetings or December 6th. And so we're looking at this point to get any indications of council availability for those dates as the beginning of the budgeting process. Comments, questions? Councillor St Louis?
For myself, Madam Mayor, the 3rd and 4th will wait. Whereas I am not here, then we can have the 6th.
Okay. Anybody else as far as scheduling or conflicts? Councillor Nickel?
Thank you for you, Madam Mayor. I also can't do the 6th.
Okay. Would council be okay with doing two consecutive evenings just to get the budget? Is that what staff had to do as well, two consecutive evenings on the 3rd and the 4th to get through the main portion of the budget as a first go around? Okay, yes. Okay, with that, if we can schedule those meetings, let the appropriate staff know. And I guess that gives you your deadline to have everything ready. So, you know, I think, you know, generally we have started a week or two earlier than that. Of course, with the new C A E starting on next Monday, this also gives Mr. Pilon a couple of weeks to get up to speed and brief on the process, and we're not kind of throwing him in on week two to budget. And I still think that we'll be able to get through the entire process. There is a portion of the memo that does discuss the timelines as per the legislation. But I think what we can do is get through these, those two days. And then if we're at a comfort level, we can look at making the appropriate resolutions to amend those timelines at those budget meetings, if that's acceptable to council.
So we're not doing the 6th at all?
What's that?
We're not doing the 6th? Or we still?
We're not doing the 6th? Well, it was the 3rd and the 4th, or the 6th as an all, because the 6th was a Saturday. So do like a 9 to 3 or something, like a marathon on the 6th. So that was kind of the idea, it was either the two evenings or the full day. So with that, we'll do the two evenings. Okay? Let's go. Next, we have 5.1.2, Block 19, Chomping Road. This came to committee in the last meeting. And since then, Madam Burke has received an additional information and request from other property owners. And so with that, I will pass the floor to Madam Clark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the Madam Mayor indicated, subsequent to the meeting when we were discussing the acquisition of a lot addition to Lot 4, the owners of Lot 3 reached out and indicated they would like to acquire the portion of the property which abuts their property. I did contact Enbridge, and there's a copy of your, of the correspondence in the agenda, which indicates they have no objection to the municipality conveying the land so long as anyone vying is aware of the constraints of the easement on the property. There's a 15 meter gas easement running through the property. Obviously, they would also be buying it as a lot addition, not as a standalone lot. So I'm seeking direction from council as to whether council is being able to convey the whole thing and in approximately the proportions shown there, and I would have it appraised, obviously, accordingly, as two separate lot additions.
Okay, questions or comments on this one? Councillor Pedern?
All right. I can't see it on our sketch here. How wide is the easement?
15 meters.
Okay, okay. How wide is the lot then?
The lot is 20 meters. Well, 20 meters, the frontage of the portion that wishes to be acquired is 20 meters.
On one side?
Yes, the orange is 20 meters.
Yes, it's actually less.
18.
Where?
18.
Where? You've got a map, Madam Mayor?
Just, just the front end.
Sure.
It's blurred, so that one.
Why am I just seeing this?
Well, it looks like this.
Okay. Maybe that's the last meeting.
Yeah.
Anyways, the lots, I don't have the actual dimensions, I just worked out the area. The area to be added to Lot 4 would be about 1,359 square meters. The portion to be added to Lot 3 would be about 20, almost 2,600 square meters. There's no water frontage being acquired by the Lot 4. And there would be about, it looks to be about 15, I'd say about 18 meters of frontage on the, being acquired on the Lot 3.
I believe that question was asked and answered last meeting, that because of the easement, the lot itself, like the full lot, the two separate pieces that we're looking at are not large enough to constitute a single building lot, because you can't build over top of that easement. So, you know, there's not the value there as far as selling it as a building lot.
So the gas company's got no objection? You got enough to?
Provided, provided that the constraints of the easement are maintained.
So they'll own the land, but they won't be able to build it on top of that easement.
Okay, but now we got one buyer that wants to be on each side, right?
That's correct.
So.
The triangle portion, the green triangle portion is not, does not have an easement over it at all. So the one that is, that the portion of the lot that would be added to the easterly property does not have any easement running over it. So that would be a lot addition, they can do whatever they want on that land. The orange section that's in the agenda, that would be added to the easterly property, it would increase the lot size for those people, they would have more space to call their own. But they would not be able to construct so much as a shed over top of the 15 meter easement. Okay, councillor Vani, did you have a question?
No, thank you, you can clarify.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments online? So staff is looking for a direction as to whether council would be in favor of not just the original request, which is the green portion of the map, but also considering these are what some people, the other property owner that showed interest, just to show hands, and then it would, they would go through the process and bring it back with an appraisal value. Okay. They run lead? Yes, and we, that's it, we have a lead. Okay, next item on the 5.3, request for financial assistance in healthcare. In your package, you have a letter from San Desante Community Hotel. And this was prepared by their executive director, Mr. Robichaud. Mr. Robichaud contacted me last week in regards to this request. Their organization in partnership with some other regional health organizations have managed to secure funding to add a full-time family physician to the practice. They are pretty far along in negotiations with a specific doctor. And he indicated that, you know, current recruitment practices offer a return-for-service agreement and inquired about the monies that council had set aside for physician recruitment in the 2025 budget. He indicated that money hadn't been put aside and that to submit a request for council consideration, and that's the basis of this letter. Questions or comments? Councillor Pedern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just have a question. Would there be, I imagine this would be in conjunction with an actual offer that their government to a physician? What would the conditions be in terms of how long the physician has to stay at the center without touching to pay the incentive?
That I'm not sure of, and that is a great question, as far as generally there is a time-specific term attached to a return-of-service agreement, but it's not indicated in this letter what that time would be, whether it's three years or five years. It is an item that we could get clarification on if.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Vani, sorry, I should have acknowledged my name. Just a nod isn't enough.
Same thing, as I said, I'd like to know the details of the agreement, if it's a pro-rated per year that they'll be giving. So it is taxpayers' money and that I'd like to make sure we're accountable and not true. If we have a policy, specific policy on how, and how do we count that money in our budget? By year-to-year basis, but it would be nice to at least have the details of how it's actually going to be shared with the physician recruitment process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor St Louis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if there's a way to try to move forward, because when I read this, obviously, it's a time-sensitive thing offered for a physician, right? I agree 100% with the Consul. I'd like to see a commitment attached to this, and I'm sure there probably is a commitment date. However, I don't know if us as a council here can agree to say, yes, we will provide the $20,000 if you can confirm that there is a commitment of five years. And if it's a five years, they can give the $20,000 from the start. If not, then they have to repay or whatnot. But again, all I'm getting at is I don't want to lose out on a physician for a municipality if it's time-sensitive to wait till the next meeting in two weeks or in a month from now to deal with this situation.
Yeah, this would have to come back at the next meeting as a resolution, if it were to be supported anyway, correct? That would be the most correct solution. And what, first of all, we can get confirmation by that time. If we wanted to give a direction to staff at this point, if we thought that $20,000 was a fair request for a five-year term of service, we could say we would be willing to do 20 on a five-year. If it's only a three-year commitment, then it would be prorated to say $12,000 or whatever. Like, we could, we could kind of give that direction now and then have a confirmation for the next meeting on what the, what the commitment term would be. Councillor Pedern?
Yes, please, I was going to propose that on a sliding scale over five years. And let's send it back to them with a firm proposal, rather than asking them, well, what, what did the center have in mind, and then have to discuss it again in the next meeting.
Negotiate.
If, if that's not acceptable, then maybe we can discuss an alternative at the meeting when it's up as a resolution.
Thank you. Councillor Pedern? I don't know why I'm having problems with these to make. Councillor Pedern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, most, councillor Restu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the, with the folks around the table as well. I know we're all pretty aware of the challenges in the healthcare system, and we've been short doctors in our community for a long number of years, even well beyond this council's term. I do believe in our budget for this current year, we had set aside some funds, and I think some of them had been, you know, pending some feedback from the physician recruitment, and it might have been with a different group, but earmarked for the same type of activity. So I agree, it's important that we take advantage of an opportunity like this, especially with the health funding environment around, around the province, around doctors, around hospitals and services. And we know we have a lot of orphan patients within West Nipissing, so anything that we can do, I'm sure the investment here will provide a, you know, a return based on services and a new doctor coming into the community, you know, with home purchase, with services that they're going to need within the community. So I'm supportive of the sliding scale to start as a back, a back offer to the community health center, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions or comments?
It seems to be generous for to go forward, just to get, I guess, a little bit more information on what that, what that term would look like and what kind of we can expect for that. And pending confirmation from the executive director, it will come back in next meeting. And I'm sure Ms. Craddock will have some faces to structure as far as just the.
But the intent of council right now, sorry, the intent of council right now would be that the $20,000 would be a five-year sort of, the number is in your head right now?
Councillor Pedern? I keep looking at every one of you blankly tonight, and I'm trying to collect your names, I don't know why, so I apologize. Councillor Pedern?
It all depends what kind of deal they had. I don't know, I don't want to be the one to try to tell them what to do. They're the one recruiting. I assume they're going to do the right, the right thing.
Okay. How about, how about then, we, in, in practice, we support a contribution to physician recruitment, and we will ask for the specifics of what that looks like from the executive director to be presented at the next meeting along with a resolution. If we want to amend the resolution as it's prepared after hearing from the executive director, we can have that discussion on the final terms, but I'm kind of agree with everybody here. If there's an opportunity to bring a full-time primary care family physician into this community, we want to work as best we can with our staff, facilitate that. And that's exactly what the money that council set aside was meant to do. So if that's okay for direction to staff, and then we can look to wrap it up next meeting and figure out what the actual details look like.
Yes.
There? Okay, any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, great. Next, we have 5.2 Planning Committee. For that, I'll pass the floor to our Chair Councillor St Louis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So under Planning Committee, we have one item at 5.2.1, which is the scheduling of statutory section 26 Special Meeting of Council. I will pass the line to Ms. Willink, if you have any additional information to share with us.
Yes, thank you. So as you said, there is some tentative dates proposed in this memo. I'm a visual person, so the second page is also kind of a visual calendar if these days aren't going to work, to see what the other options are. One thing I do want to note is, in the memo, it mentioned an open house ahead of the council meeting. We've had subsequent discussions with the consultants, and given that anyone that is going from a rural designation to an agricultural designation will also be getting a courtesy mailout advising them of that change, we do expect more involvement from the agricultural community. So we kind of believe that it may be better now, instead of just doing a one-hour open house ahead of time, to do a two-hour open house that is specifically for the agricultural community, followed by an hour-long that's general on all topics, and then start that council meeting following that. So at this time, we're just looking for direction on if we can proceed with the open house format in that way, and which date would work best. Thank you.
Mother? Will the property owners impacted be notified prior to the meeting along with the meeting date? So that they, so are those two things connected? The notification to the property owners will happen prior, so that they have an opportunity to attend in person?
Yes, to Mr. Chair, that is correct. So the meeting itself will be posted in the newspapers two weeks, two separate weeks ahead of time. And then anyone going from rural to agricultural will be getting this letter in the mail. And the intent is, because we're lucky enough to be setting it this early, that that package that goes out to them will include what the meeting date is and how to participate.
Any other questions or comments? Monsieur Pedern?
Thank you, Monsieur St Louis. Just so I'm clear, you're going to advertise the Tribune or not?
Yes, we are advertising the Tribune twice.
Okay, but you're not going to be contacting people that are affected directly of a change in zoning?
So anyone that is going from a rural designation to an agricultural designation will be getting a notice in the mail explaining how their property is affected, trying to give a brief overview of what the implications are for that change. The remainder of the public is, will just be seeing it through newspapers and our social media project website, that sort of thing.
Okay. So just the agriculture? People are going to be advised, like if there's a change in zoning, let's see further. Waterfront or something like that. These will not be contacted. It's certainly for agriculture.
That is correct, yes.
Do we know there's any change in other? Uh.
I, through Mr. Chair, would have to check. Um, I believe there may be a few minor changes. Um, just trying to kind of solidify the boundaries of where uh highway commercial district is um or downtown highway core or commercial core. There are some smaller changes like that, but it is definitely the, the agricultural community that's seeing the most change.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, so what we're looking for is just if these things are acceptable for council?
Yes, we're just thinking which one would be.
How many are you looking for?
Just one.
Just one day?
Yeah.
Counselor Pedern.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm away on seven, twenty eighth, twenty ninth. I could do the twenty eighth online depending on how long the meeting is supposed to be. Is, is the statutory meeting meant to be, uh, how much time do you think we need that evening?
Yeah, it really does depend on the turnout. Um, this is going to be a very similar to the public consultation events we did back in March. So we'll do that open house ahead of time. Um, and then the council meeting is primarily for members of the public to have their, their voice heard. So unfortunately, I really.
Okay.
Estimate on that.
Any other comments? Monsieur Goiny?
I already have an engagement on the twenty eighth in the evening, so I'd be able, but the twenty seventh and twenty ninth.
Thank you. So, and I, we don't have any. So is everybody okay with the twenty seventh? Does that work for everyone?
Well, I can't on the twenty seventh.
You can zoom on twelve.
I can zoom on the twenty eighth, unfortunately.
It's sorry, and you said you can't on the twenty eighth?
No, I already have a commitment.
Okay, so can you zoom the twenty nine?
Like the twenty seventh, twenty ninth, I can't.
Okay.
I'm available.
Monsieur Pedern.
Same area. It'd be better for me on the twenty eighth.
Oh, sees that we're at. I don't think.
But it's also the.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yes.
There's the fifth and the twelfth.
Yeah. So is everybody okay on the fifth or the twelfth?
So I'm also away, but I can zoom on the fifth and the twelfth.
Okay.
It's.
Conseil Pedern.
It's a, is it, does council, is it a council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, okay, I thought maybe it was just like uh open like we used to do in Werner and, and whoever from council wishes to show up and, okay.
No, say, say it's a formal meeting. We'll all be sitting here. Members of the, there'll be a podium, members of the public will have an opportunity to inform us on any sections of the official plan um that they would like to be heard on. Uh, and it's a, it's just an opportunity for council to actually hear uh from people before final, uh, well, not final, but the decision to submit the draft to MMAH.
So I will recommend the fifth, if everybody's okay with that.
Gee.
Let me just make one small point. I, I just want to make sure that, that going to the fifth is, is not pushing it too close to, you know, we do have a, a, a target to try to get this wrapped up by before the, the next, in, in this term of council. So is, are we pushing it a bit too much by going to the fifth? Because it was only a week ago being here if that week is.
And I, I think the fifth isn't too bad. It's only, we're only looking at a week difference, right?
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure.
Hmm. So I will recommend the fifth and I see everybody's nodding, so we will go with February fifth, twenty twenty six.
And if I made, got that confirmation that we are able to proceed with the, the two-hour agricultural open house, that one hour general open house and then the.
Right.
To council meeting.
What is the potential start time for those open houses then?
Um, the, the thought was to do the agricultural one from four to six P M and then the general one from six to seven and then have the council meeting start at seven.
And you met council here for the open, th- those sessions or are we just required at seven?
You're more than welcome to attend that regard. No, it'll be primarily for, to have the, the boards up so that everyone can kind of look around with the, sorry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. And next we have item five point three, Environmental Services Committee, and I'll pass the floor to our Chair Counselor Nickle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, there's amendments in this heading with proposed changes to the hours of living in field landfills due to safety concerns. I will open the floor for any questions or concerns on this. Counselor Larry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, are, are they changing uh the um the days or just the hours?
Just.
Are they? Uh, by changing the hours, are they pushing the, all the hours? Let's say six o'clock it starts, so they'd say they go up till four, but would they accommodate the municipality or the resident for hours uh, uh, previous to it? So the gate attendant gets the same amount of hours. Because it's very hard to get good gate attendants and if we shorten the amount of hours that attendant gets, they're already uh uh very low hours, so we're probably gonna lose some employees. So I, I, I'd be in favor of uh, uh, if we cut two hours uh, on the top side, let's add it to the bottom side to accommodate the resident and the, and the uh the one that works.
Thank you. Counselor Revard.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, yeah. So they're going like from one to six to one to four P M. That's the proposal. So from four to six, it's dark out, so that was the concern. So then they were gonna shrink that day from five hours to three hours. And the other day was nine. Sorry, eight thirty to six, right? In field. And then because that's six, then it was eight thirty to four. So, yeah, they were just shrinking.
Yeah.
But I, I do agree that on Sunday, maybe if you're shrink like three hours open on Sunday, if you work on Monday, you have a three-hour window at that point. I would suggest that it's eleven to four on Sunday instead of one to six, you still get that five hours on Sunday. And the Monday, yeah, you can shrink probably to four if it is a safety concern for dark. But I, I would hate to see that uh it's only three hours on, on a Sunday when that may be when most people use it in my mind. Uh, so it, it's, it'd be still bright out at eleven, so I don't see an, an issue there. They're still gonna lose two hours overall on the two days. But instead of four hours loss, I think that's good. Be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Counselor Larry.
Thank you again, Miss Chair. Uh, I, I was part of the association in River Valley and, and uh uh, we, we had a resident asking us at one time to expand the hours uh, uh, so the workers could have access, have to work to the dark, because our hours were from, from one, uh, from, from eleven to four, eleven to four, that was uh Wednesday and Sunday. So what, what we did is we, on Wednesday, we added two, two hours, but we took it from the bottom. So that the gate attendant had ten hours of work. So if you take, if you take away uh two hours of uh ten hours, which is, then it would, it, it wouldn't be worth it for the gate attendant. So you, I, I would really recommend we stick to the hours. If it's a safety issue, brought everything down. You're taking, taking two each of the top of the blanket, sew it to the bottom. Thank you.
I'm for saying.
I, I can understand what Conseil let it be saying, but that one, on, on your Saturday, you can't take two hours from the top and add it to the bottom because it'll be six o'clock in the morning when you're opening. So it's still dark, so it's still a safety concern. On this Sunday, I think what Conseil is saying, which I can understand, from one till six, you go to one to four, that I can understand. Maybe going at ten or eleven, you're adding a bit of hours. But on the Saturday, you can't go eight to six and start at six to four instead. You're still in, in, you're still in the dark at six in the morning. It makes no sense. Yeah, I think with the proposed, with the shortness of the days, it's unfortunate, they will maybe lose an hour, maybe two. But if you're a hundred percent right, if we can manage to save, you know, if they lose only two as opposed to four hours, I think would be best.
Counselor Pedern.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, can I, can I, I mean, for Levine, I would suggest that because it's, it's that if we cut two hours on Saturday, we just put it on the Tuesday. And maybe make the hours identical. So simplifies things. So, so we know that the landfill is open two days a week, you know, from eight thirty to four thirty. I don't know, four thirty is too late. Um, but just make it eat, make, just change hours. I know it's a bit more difficult for field because Sundays, um, it's a long day for Sunday. Uh, to be working from, well, uh, they'd have to start early and they wouldn't finish till four. So, but for, for Levine, I would just transfer the hours to the Tuesday, maybe uh for field, just lose one hour.
Thank you. Perhaps we can look at them both separately and go with the suggestion Levine proposed and then we can do the field one. Yes.
Yeah.
Um, is four thirty too late? Does it have to be four maximum?
No, it doesn't have to be four maximum, no. I mean, it's still, it's still light at four thirty.
So I would suggest for Levine, eight thirty to four thirty, and I think that maintains the total number of hours and it's the same for both days.
Who else would be in favor of what Counselor Frank proposed for Levine?
Thank you. And then for feet, sorry.
I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
So why?
Yeah.
We'd have to just, you know, eight to four on the Saturday and then like nine to four on the Tuesday. Otherwise, otherwise you can create.
It's, it's only, we're not four thirty.
Yeah, yeah. So it'd be nine to eight to four on Tuesday and eight to four. Otherwise, yeah.
But his hours are still the same.
That's even better.
Thank you.
Then you may have suggestions for the field landfill? Yes, Counselor.
Yeah, I'll repeat. Thank you through you. Then just eleven to four or ten to four on Sunday. And you keep the Monday as proposed, eight thirty to four. Uh, they'd be losing, if you start at ten, it'd be one hour. And if it's at eleven, they'd lose a two-hour thing instead of the proposed four.
I agree with that as well. Who else would be in favor of what Counselor wanted?
Was that Henry someone, I guess?
Ten to four. Is that enough direction for you, Ms. Craddock?
Sorry, I was ten.
Ten to four.
Okay.
Four on Sunday. Monday would stay. Eight thirty to four. Yeah. You got those, okay. That's enough.
Yes.
Information for you. Okay, good. Madam Mayor?
I was just gonna say, I believe that the intent of council, just in, in case our math is wrong.
Your math on the fly.
Is to ensure that the hours for the landfill attendants remain consistent, not losing pay.
You got good.
Sorry, sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, I agree with everything uh that's being suggested and keeping the hours of the same, good for the employee and good for residents as well to access. Just if I'm looking at uh a field, we're looking at taking two hours off of Monday. Right? Ten, two hours early? So if we're looking at adding two hours to Sunday, it would be eleven to four, right? If we're going ten to four, then we're adding another hour?
They're also losing two hours on Sunday.
Sunday.
So they're losing two hours each day. And gaining three, gaining three.
Only have one.
Sure, yeah.
Any other questions or comments on that? Back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll move on to the um, uh, regular portion of our meeting. Item six point one is the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
It is moved by Counselor Revard and seconded by Counselor St. Louis. It resolved the consent agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on November the fourth, twenty twenty five, be approved as presented.
Okay, questions or comments? All, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, next, under new business, um authorized submission of delegation requests uh for the Roma twenty twenty six conference. Uh, I did kind of let council know uh last week that this would be coming up so they could well, put on our thinking caps as to uh proposed delegations for Roma. Uh, it will be our new C A O, the first uh, uh adventure at municipal conference as a C A O, so hoping we get a couple uh to trial by fire. Uh, and so I will open the floor to suggestions. Counselor Pedern.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, Werner Water. Uh, we, we still don't know about our application for funding, uh, but regardless of whether we know or not, I think we should, we have to keep spending on their door every possible opportunity.
Yeah, I uh, I, I agree with that. I think Werner Water is the new Champlain Bridge and now that we've gotten that one solved and that until we get some kind of resolution from the provincial government, um, every conference and every opportunity that we have uh to speak with them about the issue should be pursued. Other suggestions? Uh, Counselor Revard.
Thank you. Just seeing here for uh Ms. Hemming, apology, we, we should probably ask about the landfill expansion as well. Because the M E C P, on the looks of it, things are taking a little longer than expected and maybe we could ask for a, a gentle punch.
Yes.
So you can get there.
Absolutely. Counselors in favor of that one? Yes.
Yep.
Uh, Counselor Restu.
She needs.
Counselor Restu.
Yeah, if we could um follow up on uh the issue of the uh glyphosate spraying in the Nipissing Forest. I know when I spoke at the A M O, uh, the ministry did uh, commit to having ongoing discussions with it, and I don't think we've received anything since then. Uh, and then I know some of the forests uh to the west of our area had, had uh had their spraying paused, uh, but ours, from what I know, still went ahead. So we'd like to uh see if we can get some dialogue going on that.
Everybody good with that one, so request?
Definitely.
Thank you. So that's a, a forestry or a conservation environment?
Probably forestry. There's probably four or five different ministries that are effects, but that's, I, I know when we, when we spoke there that that was the reference was to uh Minister of Forestry.
Okay, I'm gonna cancel. No kick. And uh, oh, sorry. Counselor Pedern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I would also like to uh request the delegation with the Minister of Health. Um, on a subject that we, that I raised with the Minister of Long-Term Care, but it's, it's not really her uh domain. And it's for the Minister of Health, Ministry of Health, to offer the practice-ready assessment in French. And this is the, this is the uh course that um foreign doctors have to pass in order to be able to qualify as family doctors. And, and we had a discussion about this, I think, a few meetings, or when we discussed the A M O uh delegations, is that it, it makes it very difficult for French speaking unilingual doctors from Europe, for example, from France or Belgium or Switzerland to come and work here if English is not their first language. So it makes it easy, it's quite easy for American doctors and Irish doctors and British doctors. And in fact, you know, they, they fast, they're fast-tracking the Brits, the Irish and the Americans, but they're not fast-tracking the French-speaking European doctors. And that's one of the biggest barriers.
Thank you. I, I would agree with that one. Again, we had that discussion both with the Ministry of Francophone Affairs uh and the Minister of Long-Term Care as a kind of a side conversation uh at A M O. Uh, and both those ministries were surprised that that uh assessment is not available uh in French. And it is very limiting for communities such as ours. So um if uh, if counsel's in favor, we'll put that one through. And it is very limiting for communities such as ours, so if if council's in favor, we'll put that one through. Uh, and then the only other one I would say, and I I would actually take Counselor Restool's opinion on this, but. The housing project at at Micho Street, at the Stato complex, for a not-for-profit housing corporation. Is another one of those where we know we're very close, we know we have the recommendations of D S A B. Um, and, you know, we hoping that we'll be next on the list funding, and it's one that we know we're shovel-ready, so. It's one of those ones where until we get the money, I would put it on the list every time, and they can say yes or they can say no, but. It does show persistence on that part. How about Counselor Restool?
Yeah, I just want that. I agree with that a hundred percent. It's it's kind of like the water Werner situation. It's more housing for our community, so I definitely support that as well.
Wow, I would say that's a fair list. If if it's like last time and we get everything we ask for, it'll be a very busy conference, um, so.
Double meetings at the same time.
Yeah, so, uh, unless there's anybody else that have any other, uh, issues that that they believe should be addressed this time at the provincial level. Okay?
I'm going to read the resolution.
Okay, so Madam Clerk will read the resolution now that we've filled in all the blanks.
And whereas the Rural Ontario Municipal Association and Roma has announced that the delegation request process for the twenty twenty six Roma Annual Conference is open. With submission deadline of November eighteenth. And whereas the Roma Conference provides the opportunity for the West Nipissing Municipality to meet with ministers, parliamentary assistants and senior Ontario government officials. To discuss key and local regional matters. Be it resolved that the Council for the West Nipissing Municipality directs staff to submit delegations requests to the following ministries regarding the following topics. Infrastructure regarding the Werner Water Expansion, the Ministry of Environment, Climate and Parks regarding the landfill expansion. And the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry regarding aerial spray. The Minister of Health regarding practice-ready assessments to be provided in French. And the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing concerning the O Chateau building expansion.
Not for profit.
Oh, not for profit, sorry.
And the. Minister of Environment Conservation.
That was number two.
Yeah, it's just, it was mentioned climate and parks, it's conservation.
They changed the name.
Okay, Counselor.
Uh, for the Minister of Health, it it's also, uh, fast-tracking, uh, European-trained.
French-speaking.
Well, anyway, I mean. There shouldn't be a difference between.
Yes.
French qualifications or Italian or, you know.
Yeah. Okay, resolutions, some red questions, comments on the resolutions. All in favor? Scary, thank you.
It is moved by Counselor Fada and seconded by Counselor Nickel. Whereas the Director of Community Services and Economic Development presented proposed changes to the operating model of the Sturgeon River House Museum. And whereas council is in agreement to the changes. As proposed, be it resolved that the Council for the West Nipissing Municipality approves the proposed changes to the operations of the Sturgeon River House Museum.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Very, thank you.
It is moved by Counselor Rivera and seconded by Counselor Gonye, be it resolved that the third quarter financial reports for the West Nipissing Municipality be received.
Thank you. Uh, with your indulgence, could you just provide a brief? Local update, I know the report is in there, um.
Um, so I'll I'll start with overall, things are okay. I'm just, you know, so you don't need to worry about that. Um, it 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 is an interesting budget year, and when we did Q two. Um, we were looking at hydro, utility costs in general, but hydro specifically being being quite a concerning line as we rolled through it. It it has, it it's still going to be a concerning line at the end of the year, but it it is tempered a little bit, which. Um, speaks to me that our seasonal variation that we're getting in in our utility costs is getting greater. You know, so that we've we've managed to kind of smooth it over the the summer, and I I think that probably reflects the the last several years, we've had a lot of of. Change in what to expect in our seasons and, um, you know, when seasons start. Um, how we use our facilities and things like that. Um, but it is one of those things that as we're budgeting going forward to the, you know, I'll have to sort of keep in mind when we're working with the departments that that are. Our utility consumption pattern, it's not just a utility consumption cost, but it is pattern, has has changed over the, over the time. Um, a- across the board, we are seeing this, the savings in departments due to salary and benefits, and that that's not something that I usually want to kind of like. Bank on, but what we are seeing is that, um, filling of vacant positions is taking longer than, uh, you know, we would sometimes like. We've had to go back out for for multiple postings on some post, on some position to get folks in, um. When in fact, when I see the department, when we we have folks with kind of rotating leaves, um, when we have folks off on protected leaves or temporary leaves. Um, due to. You know, illness or family situations or things like that where they've got those temporary leaves, they are more difficult to to fill. Um, in general, and we do have a part-time pool, but it's not always able to fill all those those sort of temporary vacancies, so it does create. This, uh, this, um, from a budget perspective, savings in in cost, what it does mean is it puts pressure on service delivery. On the other, on the other side, so, um, it it's not always a good thing to say, yeah, I've got, I've got savings and salary, because the offset of savings and salaries means we've got a. Service delivery issue coming or building that that has gone on, so, um. You know, you've talked, we've talked the last couple of years of fleet repair maintenance, you know, we've done a lot of investment into those, uh, into those lines. Um, you know, we are still seeing those lines are are still well-utilized lines. We did go back out again, speaking of vacancies, looking for our. Our mechanic position without any luck, um, at all this year, so it is still a vacant position, which again keeps that pressure on to those. External repairs and maintenance, um, lines, and the rest is sort of a little bit of summary by the. Um, by the the departments, um, but overall, we are looking at a, um, a a good budget year and, um, I'm. Um, anticipating that we will have a, um. A surplus, not a large surplus, but a surplus at the end of the the year that, uh, on our, on our budget.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions or comments? Um, I just have one question in regards to, more in regards to budgeting, so looking forward, when we go into our meetings, um, at the beginning of December. You usually provide our year-to-date and budget, well, I don't know, if that's the question, is it going to? The information provided to us at the beginning of December, will it be this third quarter, these third quarter numbers? Or will it be kind of, uh, as recent as you've been pulling, get into a document, so?
So what I actually, um, Madam Mayor, um, would like to do is the same as we did last year, so you'll get five years, you get four years of actual. And then I'll do a projection on this year, um, so that you see kind of where things are 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 going. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's perfect. Uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, the resolution's been read on the floor. Uh, all those in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Okay. Uh, next, we do have an agenda for this evening, uh, due to the content of that, I will ask Counselor Gonye to throw his portion on the media.
Hey, Madam Mayor, so under the item, under item eight, is. We connected a report. But we did receive the integrity commission report in regards to, uh. Uh, complete mates. Also to counsel Fagan. So at this moment, I hope everybody had a chance to review those letters. I'll open it up for any questions. Clarifications, we'll see if I have. What's the cost? Those two. Complaints?
I don't have that yet. We would.
Can we have it in the future?
Yeah.
Okay, I like. We can bring it back once we have the costing of the. Doost investigation, so.
Yeah.
So would you like to just see overall I C costs for the year?
Yes. Well, that wouldn't be bad. Is everybody in agreement to get costing of the I C? Okay, perfect, yeah.
And I just, if I may, I just have one, one more comment. I'm. How do I say that? I'm very disappointed. That he made. Those complaints. After we washed them. Play on this one. The whole meeting. That's all I've been, I see.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? None? Um, I just have one item, uh, under Mayor's Rashon. There is. Uh, there is a comment from the Integrity Commissioner, let me just make sure I have the right one here. Yep. Uh, I think there is a, just a minute there. Okay, sorry, no, I just, I just didn't read that well. So unless there's any other comments or questions regards to the two letter, two letter has been received. We did get the training from the Integrity Commissioner to, uh. Tighten up our relationship and our working partners, which is the administration staff with elected officials ourselves. And that was a good refresher, I think. It's it's always good. And it's a bit clearer in regards to what our policy is in regards to to staff communication and also council communication. So to that, I thank Monsieur Paul Cassan for doing that, and we'll pass it back to you, Madam.
Thank you very much. Um, section nine for the mayor's report, I do just want to highlight a couple of things going on. Um, we are, uh, heading into, uh, Remembrance Day. Uh, there are several events going on through the community, uh, to commemorate the sacrifices of. Uh, our service members in the armed forces, uh, so I'd like to highlight a couple of those. The service for Cash Bay. Will be taking place on Saturday, November eighth at ten forty-five at the Cash Bay Senate Taff. Uh, Field will be hosting, uh, a ceremony on. Monday, November tenth. At ten forty-five in the Knights of Columbus Hall, the Sousseau de la de la Guise. Uh, Sturgeon and Kipling both have their ceremonies scheduled for Tuesday, November eleventh at ten forty-five. Um, we do have some information on Werner, but it was a little unclear as to whether it is Monday or Tuesday, so we will. Uh, clarify that and post an update on that. Additionally, the Legion. Uh, Royal Canadian Legion Ladies Auxiliary is hosting their lunch on Saturday, November eighth, from eleven to two at the Sturgeon Falls Legion Branch. Um, and with that, um, we will be proceeding into both session.
It is moved by Counselor Gonye and seconded by Counselor Rivera. It resolved that we proceed into closed meeting is authorized in section two thirty-nine, two of the municipal act to discuss the following. Uh, pose, uh, security of the property of the municipality or local board. And a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board concerning the field vote launch. Thirty-Frenth Street and the field outdoor bank.
Questions, comments, all in favor?
Sorry, I would do it.
Yes, sorry.
The resolution to go into closed is public.
Yes.
Um. Um, shouldn't it be on the agenda then? And 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 shouldn't be, because I think the resolution states the reasons we're going to close. Right? Here we go. Which section of the Act? We are going to.
I'm not sure.
Because there there is a list. This law has a list of reasons why we can go into. So I think the resolution usually contains that reason.
It's.
So shouldn't the resolution be part of the agenda?
It is.
Not on the, yes, not on the H T L version. I would have a PDF.
Sorry, I have the PDF version.
Oh, so in the PDF version, it is there? Oh, okay, so, well, it could be.
The, uh, the H T M L version only give attachments, it doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't? So I need to refer to them.
Okay, uh, sorry, all in favor of proceeding to close? Scary, thank you.
Uh, Counselor, uh. Restool, I'm going to. Take you off. And then we'll come back in.
Real time was quick, five minutes, right?
Yeah, can we just like, I guess while you guys do stuff?